Hello, good evening. Um, today is the regular meeting for the library board of just sees today is Tuesday, May twenty 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 five at six P M. Um, if you like to watch the live telecast, you can watch it on youtube dot com slash at daily city gov slash streams. Or daily city dot org slash agendas or Comcast channel twenty seven. Um, if you wanna uh participate in public uh comment, um could also go to daily C dot org slash agendas. Or library board at daily C dot org. Um, the time is six oh six, I would like to call the meeting to order. Uh first order of business is the pledge of pledge to the flag. Shayla, may I get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Lex.
Present.
Trustee Powell.
Present.
And President Tronco.
Present.
And absent today are um Vice President Goodman and um trustee Pacheco will hopefully join us shortly.
Sounds good. Um, so first item is approval of agenda of the regular meeting of May twenty 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 five. Uh, I would like a motion for approval.
So moved.
May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the pose, motion passes. Uh, next item is the approval minutes for the regular meeting of April fifteen twenty twenty five. Uh, was there any comments or questions, or do we need to look over it really quick before making a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing aye and hearing none is uh motion passes. Uh, next item is a presentations report from the Daily City Public Library D C P L A.
So we are honored today to have Dan Barrios from the um board of the D C P L A to report out on their activities. Welcome.
Thank you for having me, everyone, like uh Shayla said, I'm Dan Barros. Um, I'm the current vice president with D C P L A. Um, I've got a few brief updates for you this evening. First and foremost, um, wanna let you know that D C P L A gave a grant of eleven thousand five hundred dollars to the Daily City Public Library recently on May twelfth. Um, this was thanks and generous to donations made by uh the community at our Saint Patrick's Day luncheon last March. Uh, also to note, all three library fund the need items were funded during that time. Um, they were the jumbo magnetic tiles for preschool and early elementary school patrons. A refresh of the library's Native American books collection and four one thousand dollars summer learning program incentive scholarships. Um, the next update is kind of exciting uh for Giants fans out there. We invite you all to join us uh for a Giants game on August seventeenth. It's a one oh five game. Um, it's basically daily Daily City Library Day. Uh, it's partnership with D C P L A, Daily City Public Library and the San Francisco Giants. Um, we ask that you use our code, a special code when you're buying tickets for that day. And D C P L A and specifically uh the the Daily City Public Library will get five dollars for every ticket that's purchased um as part of this special program. Uh, so we do have a lot of information on D C P L A's website. We also have some flyers at the D C uh Public Library and their social media pages. So you can find this in the various areas, but do visit um those sites for that information to get specific ticket information so that we can reap those benefits. And we can usually, it's it's puts everybody in one section together also. So we kind of have a limited number of tickets, kind of can take over a section, you know, as a group and as a community would actually be a pretty fun experience out there as well. And the last update is just that our May membership drive is happening soon. So we encourage folks to please continue to show your support for our libraries by renewing your membership. And with that, that concludes my report for the evening. I'll take any questions if you have any questions at all.
Uh, my only question, and I'm glad you mentioned membership, is do you guys now have a way of letting people know when their membership has lapsed and that they need to renew?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't know if we have like any automatic um you know, sort of reminder that gets sent out for that, but I can inquire about that with our membership team and assure that we do have some sort of tickler that gets sent out there. Because we don't wanna lose your membership as much as I'm sure those who are signed up as members don't wanna be reminded that, oh, your membership has lapsed and you're no longer a member. So I think that's a great idea if we don't already have something. So we'll look into that and to confirm.
Well, it was a longstanding problem, as I recall, that, you know, there was no way to alert people that it was time to renew, other than the general mailings. And then, you know, as a member, when I get that sort of thing from other organizations as well, I never know, you know, when did I last write the check? How long ago was it? You know, do I need to renew now or is it three months from now?
Yeah, I think with technology, we've got, it's gotten more sophisticated. So I think we should be able to leverage that somehow to make it somehow automatic. So like I said, we'll, we'll look into that in our next board meeting and we'll confirm. And maybe if we don't have something already set up with that, we'll try to figure out a way to get that done.
Okay. Um, and at the next meeting, whoever comes, would you ask them to give us a little update on that? You know, whatever you guys decide, no, we don't have it, we don't have time to do it yet.
Yeah.
You know, we'll do it next year or whatever, or we've already done it.
Right, right, now I'll, we'll be sure to report out on that for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
You got it. Any other questions, anything?
Yeah, um, for the Giants tickets, it's just found on the website.
Yeah, you can go to the D C, D C P L A's website has it. And also the D C Public Library's social media accounts, I think, have displayed some information about it as well. There's some Q R codes. If you just scan the Q R card, I think it'll take you to the, right to the registration page where you can buy those tickets.
Okay, great.
Email everyone um a copy of the flyer as well.
Great. That would be great.
You probably said this, but what day of the week is that?
That's a Sunday afternoon game. It's a uh one o'clock day game start. And the cool thing also about Sundays with kids is um if you've ever been to a Sunday game, at the end of the game, you can exit and then come right back in through the right field gate with kids. And kids under fourteen can run the bases after the game. So it gives you a little bit more incentive to come out for a Sunday game, you know?
And bobbleheads.
And there's a bobblehead that day as well, I believe, yeah. Forget which bobblehead it it is, which player, but everybody loves a bobblehead, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. All right, guys, well, thanks, good night.
Good night, appreciate it.
There's nothing else. Uh Shayla, was there any public comments?
No public comments today.
All right, sounds good. Um, may we go to the next item, the director's report, summer learning twenty twenty five?
Absolutely, thank you. So it's that time again. Um, so I, I, I've brought this up before, but we have some specific challenges this year that necessitated making a, a few changes to our program. Um, we like to um keep our most popular elements of it consistent, but it's also good, I think, sometimes to, to do a refresh. So um sad, sad news was the Measure K funding got discontinued. And this was the funding that was for the books that we give away to families to build their home libraries. That was the biggest chunk of it. But that funding also covered um the art that we use in our um, our logs and, and our promotional material and all that, as well as the scholarships. So that was the challenge. Um, but the good news is um that D C P L A was able to successfully raise funds to backfill for those scholarships. We're very excited about that. Um, we were able to make an arrangement to reuse, um, well, to use different art from the same artist as last year. So that was, that was positive, and I think, I think it turned out really nice. I've, I've put by each of your um workstations, a copy of the um, the two different logs that we're gonna use. And that showcases the art. So one log for the younger children and one for the teens and adults. Um, all right, uh, let's see. And the other, the other thing with the books, um, we're definitely gonna have to scale it back a little bit, but, but we were able to, um, while we're proposing, putting some funding into the next budget. So that, that's something that's just gonna be sustainable moving forward, cuz that's an important part of our program. So um, when you come in and you um sign up to do the summer learning program, you will get a free book this year and hopefully all years going forward. Let's see, uh, as I mentioned, there's um logs, very similar to how we've done it in past years with the um log for the younger kids and then also for the teens. But you'll see that the, the, the bookmark log um is also for adults, which is um something we wanted to do this year is you specifically, we wanted to encourage all members of the family to read, cuz that's, you know, I think an important part of creating a culture of reading in, you know, in the home. Um, and then also for, for other avid library users that happen to be adults and maybe miss doing their so- uh summer reading program, they'll be able to join as well. Um, we have a, a really nice uh schedule of um online act, or of, excuse me, in-person activities. Um, so these are hands-on activities that are um gonna take place at each week um for the kind of middle seven weeks when the kids are out of school uh at each of our libraries. Uh, we also have some special performers coming in um to do some, so for some special events. Uh, another challenge that we had this year that was um particular to right now is, of course, the construction project that's ongoing at ceremony. Um, so we're not able to use the community room, which is typically where we hold um these kinds of activities at ceremony. Um, so there will not be as many activities, but um the staff have been really creative in figuring out how to work around that. So um they're gonna start something called Messy Mondays. So they're gonna do some activities outside that, that we probably wouldn't even wanna do inside. So, so kind of um taking advantage of, of the circumstances. Um, and then uh we'll also be partnering with the Department of Recreation Services and uh holding, hold, oh yay! Um, and holding uh one of the special performances at um in the ser- uh in, inside the clubhouse. So it'll be something that can be uh enjoyed by the, the club, the um members of the public and also enjoyed by, by the participants in the library, or in the camps, excuse me. Hi.
Hi, sorry about that. Uh, I didn't get the email that there was a meeting. I was looking through my uh inbox and I didn't receive anything from you.
I will have to double check.
Okay, yeah.
Have everything correct and up to date.
Okay, sure.
So we were just talking about um this year's summer reading program.
Right, okay.
Um, I, you have there uh the schedule of events, and it's gonna culminate, culminate at the end with a, with a party, which we've done the last few years in Geller Park. So we're, we're looking forward to all of these activities. These are gonna be good. Um, and then we're also introducing a um, a weekly drawing. So families are gonna be able to enter um every time they come into the library. So it's kind of to incentivize and, and build some excitement around visiting the library during the summer. Um, and then each week there'll be a, a prize, which will be like a themed basket. Um, so something like an S F Giants basket or which, you know, would have some tickets and some memorabilia. Or a, a family gardening basket, which might have, you know, tools for gardening that are appropriate for, for younger kids and, and for families. Um, D C P L A has generously, um, their board members actually individually have offered to help build us some of these, these baskets. So we shout out to them, thank you. Um, and then the other new exciting thing is um we're gonna have um book bags, tote bags um that are gonna be branded. We have a nice original design for them. And um for that, we've partnered with thirteen gallons that does, um, you're familiar with them. It's a local business um and very community oriented. And so they're gonna be um helping us by doing the, the screen printing on those bags.
Hmm, yes.
Yeah, and that, that's something that um people who finish the, the program will be able to get this bag in um children and adults while supplies last. Uh, and let's see, and uh I think the only other new thing, and this is not quite settled, but um we're hoping to um work out an agreement with the Jefferson Elementary School District um that we would be able to um with the permission of the student, of course, be able to pass along the names of all the kids that have finished the program to the schools, to their next school, so that they can be recognized at the beginning of the school year. It's a nice incentive and a nice um kind of way for us to, to partner with the school district. So hopefully we'll be able to, to work that out. I think we should um be able to do that no problem. And so that is, that is summer learning twenty twenty five.
It looks fun.
Yeah, the art, I think the art was really nice. I was really happy with that. So, and I, and, and just kudos to the staff for, for looking at the challenges and coming up with creative solutions.
I don't think this is the right name for the person, but I noticed that Brother Buzz is not on the schedule this summer, is he? You know, the beekeeper that would come in and.
Oh, uh, I don't think we do have a, a, a bee, bee program.
Right.
We usually rotate, so we don't do them each year every year.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, so we have some, some new ones. The Afro Peruvian dance, um, I don't think we've ever had that. Um, uh, oh, and the Firelight Shadow Theater, which um, we have so much natural light. That one's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, but I think it's such a really interesting thing, something new and different. So I'm excited about that one as well. And then all the, usually um the, then the staff come up with the staff-led, you know, crafts and, and other activities. So I was particularly liking the Calder-inspired sculptures. Any questions about the summer?
Uh, no, it, it looks, it looks fun. You know, the shadow theater looks nice, I like the, the boy cried wolf. Uh, now the lizard lady reptiles, will she actually be bringing live reptiles to the?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, damn, cool, okay, and magician, okay, yeah. Looks fun, looks like a, looks like it's gonna be a great summer.
Yeah, jam packed. Full of activities. That's really ki- kind of part of, you know, the goal of it is to create this hub, you know, this constant hum of activity. So the library is a, is just a good destination for families that, you know, might be looking for something to do.
You know, and plus too, with all these activities that are going on, I think it, it would be great, you know, cuz it's gonna be good for students. It'll keep their mind sharp, keep their mind busy while they're out of school. So this is a great way to, you know, to further um, you know, have a good educational experience and, uh, you know, keep their mind fresh and, you know, it's, I like it.
Thank you, Shayla. If there's nothing else, um, may we go to the next one, which is the trustees' report, uh, library funding?
Um, so I can provide a little background, but this, this first item was put on the agenda at the request of trustee Lex. Um, the uh just to, to talk, uh, well, specifically, I think the thing that, that brought it up was learning about the way that San Francisco Public Library does their funding, which is quite different from the way we do our funding. So I can provide a little bit of background. I don't have a lot of depth of knowledge of San Francisco's budget, but um I did a little looking around. So just for background on our budget, um, mo- like, uh, local public libraries, city libraries, municipal libraries are typically funded by their municipality. Um, and so the, the general fund is, is where our funding comes from. Um, and the funding that, the funds that go into the general fund come from prop, well, they come from actually a bunch of different taxes and fees. But the vast majority of it comes from property tax and sales tax revenue that comes into the city and is, is then in the general fund to be used for the city's different services and departments. So in, uh, so for this coming year, I, uh, the proposed budget for the library is gonna be um five million six hundred and twenty nine dollars. Uh, five million six hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Um, and that comes to about four point three percent of the general fund. Um, about half a million of this is, it is actually specifically attributable to Measure Q. This is for the three F T's that were required to restore hours out at Bay Shore and John Daly Library. So we're much appreciative to the community for passing that. Um, so we're able to, to open those, those libraries, those hours. Um, so um, looking at San Francisco, they have had a different, different path there. A very different uh or- organization in terms of scale. But they um ba- apparently back in nineteen ninety four, um, they, they were facing budget cuts and, and, and and I cannot relate to this, you know, had um over the years, a lot of budget cuts and, and cumulatively, that can really impact your ability to provide services. So um the Friends of the San Francisco Public Library launched a ballot initiative. Um, and it passed by more than seventy percent, which is pretty amazing. It's the Library Preservation Fund, and it's a charter amendment because San Francisco is a charter city. Um, and it'll, it, with the funding that came through that, they were able to expand their hours, restore their collections. Um, they still have done a couple of bond measures over the years for, for actual facilities, though. Um, the fund is, comes from a baseline budget equivalent of less than two percent of the city's overall budget. So it's like a set aside of the, of the city's budget. So um, as I mentioned, we have four point three percent of the general fund, so um it's lower than that. But then they also have this property tax set aside, which is um two point five cents for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation. So property tax, I think, probably, and I'm not, not an economist, but I think is probably a more stable source of revenue than something like sales tax. And this is, the Library Preservation Fund is, is their primary source of funding, although they do get, get funding from their friends and, and requests and things like that as well. Um, and then uh I think the la- so in twenty twenty two was the last time that um this particular funding was renewed. Um, it went to the voters, it was Prop F, um, and it renewed it for twenty-five years by over seventy-five percent. They have amazing support from the community, it's really, and, and not by accident. I know, um, it's funny you brought this up. And you, you, once, once you start thinking about something, you hear about it at different places. We happen to have um recently hired um somebody who did, was a librarian, a branch manager, actually, for, for San Francisco Public Library. And, and she, she remembers all of the, all of the events, all of the effort that went into um making sure that the community, building that community support. So, cuz it, it has to, you know, it has to be something that come, it's grassroots and they've got the friends. More importantly, they've got the, the supervisors, and they've got the Board of Supervisors and the mayor on, on board with it. And they all kind of, you know, are really pushing for that. Um, and let's see, just also, just to give you some scale, their budget, um, I didn't, I, their twenty twenty-six wasn't something I could easily find. But their, their budget for the library is a hundred eighty-six million dollars, which includes some capital, six point seven in capital funds. Um, but they do have twenty-seven branches, and um San, uh, San Francisco does have an overall budget of fourteen point six billion dollars. So it's, it's, it's quite a bit larger than ours. So that's, I, I looked into it, that's kind of what I, what I was able to, to find, and I'm hoping that is helpful to inform your discussion. Um, Dr. Lex, I know, um, you, you, this was of interest to you, so.
Right, well, I came across this in an article in the San Francisco Chronicle. And I was really intrigued by the notion of uh a ballot measure being presented to the voters at large and the level of support that ballot measure received to permanently dedicate a certain percentage of city funding to the libraries. And whether or not it would be legal, I'm not saying feasible necessarily, but legal to have a similar uh, uh, option here in, in Daily City, recognizing that we're, what, a general law city? Is that what it's called? Versus a charter city, a charter government city. Uh, whether that would be an option, and if so, uh, to you know, just do some blue sky discussion with D C P L A about whether or not that would be something we would wanna collaborate on and consider for the future. Um, because we all know what kinds of funding problems we've had, that it's been generally flat uh relative to some other city departments. And uh, you know, I think all of us would like to see a more stable funding base uh for, for our libraries. One of the questions I asked Shayla uh was if we received a similar amount to what San Francisco receives through that ballot measure that was passed, uh, would it, how much of our budget would it cover? And it sounds like it would cover about half. So that's another factor. I mean, two percent versus four percent, you know, is significant. But did you have a chance to talk to Rose, our city attorney, and ask whether or not anything like that could possibly occur if we had the support?
I'm, no, I didn't, I'm sorry. I think it, it's something also, um, you know, that the um, maybe something to bring up with your city council, the city council members that appointed you. Cuz they would, it was, it's um, the Board of Supervisors voted to put, in San Francisco, voted to put this on the ballot. So that may be the process.
I thought, I, I'm confused. I thought that it was a sort of a voter initiative to put it on the ballot, that they collected a bunch of signatures to qualify it. And at the seventy percent level.
You're right, I'm sorry, they, but they signed on as cosponsors of it.
Okay.
Voted, voted for that, I'm sorry.
Right. Would it be possible to ask Rose whether it's legally feasible? And then, you know, if so, that would, I, I mean, my approach would be to just discuss it with D C P L A. And if they're interested, then we could go and start talking to council members. You know, with some specific ideas and uh background information. Uh, and, you know, the fact that the city attorney believes that this is a legal possibility for us, should the council support it? And should the citizens of Daily City support it?
Specifically, uh, like a budget set aside.
Now, having said that, this was, you know, I'll call it my bright idea, and I would certainly uh be interested in whether any other members of the board think it's worth pursuing beyond what we've discussed tonight or not. And you won't hurt my feelings if you say, well, maybe this isn't the best thing to do. Is there any sense of the board?
I think it's a good idea to have um a little bit of sense of urgency towards it, cuz you brought up a really good point. Um, do you mean by like continuing to have a conversation and add it to the next agenda?
And possibly by that time, uh, we'll have some information from the city attorney.
Um, I guess for me, yeah, I like this idea. I mean, ultimately, all we can do is just pose and, you know, if it's, is feasible. And then, you know, and if it is, pose it to the voters and allow, just like anything, allow them to decide, so.
Well, you know, the voters decide on things like funding a fire station or bringing a truck back and that kind of thing. And so in my mind, you know, if we can do that as a city, then maybe we could do something like this.
So I guess, uh Shayla, what would be next steps to go towards that?
Like motion to approve to add this now, or?
Ye- yeah, I'm, um, it's, it's not an area I'm, I'm knowledgeable in, unfortunately. So um, just, yeah, the, just the mechanism there and whether it, what, what's applicable in, in our circumstance. Because it's definitely different than, than San Francisco, just foundationally different. Um, and then if it is something that people are interested in, it, um, anything that's you're gonna bring to the voters, it's just a huge amount of advocacy. And that's something that, that needs to be done by, you know, elected officials and appointed officials and, and um, you know, uh, community advocates. Cuz, yeah, the staff, the staff can't really do that.
And in fact, even if it's a possibility, we might find that the council has absolutely no interest in this and that we wouldn't have that community advocacy at that level and decide, well, you know, it was a good idea, but it's not gonna go anywhere.
I was gonna say, could we do like a subcommittee type of thing?
Well, at this point, I think, I mean, my, my question is, is it legal to do it in Daily City, you know, given our form of government, you know, or not? Is it an option? Because if it's not, then there's no point in, you know, thinking twice.
Okay, and then we'll just put it on the next agenda. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know. We'll, we'll, we'll have to look into it.
Something, is it appropriate for Dr. Lex to reach out to the city attorney with a question slash proposal, or should it be, um?
I'll send an inquiry. I know, I know, I know everyone's just been incredibly busy lately, so I don't know, yeah, when there will be time for that, but.
I found that often, uh, well, in my personal experience, uh, there seems to be a preference for uh, commission members and Board of Trustee members to work through the existing city government communication lines, rather than going directly to the attorney. So, you know, I don't wanna step on any new toes.
Okay. It's a bold idea.
Thank you, Chayla.
If there's nothing more on that item, um, may we go on to the next item?
Sure, um, I can report what there is to report on that. So the, um, the work group working on the D C P L A, um, Library Board, um, Community Driven Grant, uh, Giving Project hasn't met since our last meeting, but, um, I do know that, um, Astrid, who is the representative from the D C P L A Board, had mentioned, um, at the last D C P L A Board meeting, um, that, um, she has a draft, um, available online of the, of the survey, and she's hoping to get, um, to get feedback from, from, well, I think members of the, of the little subcommittee working on it, but it's perhaps something that we wanted to agendize and get, um, some feedback from the full board. If that's, that's up to you, if you, if you wanna continue working with, with the smaller group or, or bring the draft here for feedback.
I'm open to bringing the draft here for feedback.
Me as well.
Yeah, so am I.
Were there any more questions, concerns or comments on that item? All right. Uh, may we go towards announcements and communications, Chayla?
Nothing other than what I've already brought.
All right. And then next one is agenda building for next meeting. So if there's anything we haven't spoke about to go towards the next meeting?
With the permission of the president, I'd like to just go back. It's not, I, I'll call it communications. I was in the Daly City branch today, and, uh, I was surprised to find a sandwich board standing on the floor. You know, it's probably about this high. And here is essentially what it said. They've also put this online, uh, in the Daily Wire, so I'll just pass this along. It's a Support Your Library Appeal, and it's sponsored by D C P L A. It's approved by the libraries. Here you go, Gary. It's at the Westlake Branch, but, oh, and Chayla's got a picture of the, the item itself. And I was just really impressed. I thought it was great that that outreach is being made in the library. So I wanted to share that with everyone and compliment D C P L A, and, uh, you know, the library staff were approving that it be placed there.
Yeah.
So it's kind of brand new, right?
Yeah, recent, yeah.
And a simple why not, right? There's, um, the marketing looks good. Um, there's a lot of foot traffic there. When I'm at the library and I'm like, maybe like waiting for something or, I don't know, like ten to these or rounds will definitely like catch, catch eyes.
Yeah, we've al-
We need that for the support.
We've al- we've always had, you know, their brochures and everything, you know, along with all of our other handouts, but we have, we have a lot of handouts and postings, so this is more prominent. And, um, uh, we were discussing earlier, they, they have a, they have one at each of the library locations, and they have a fifth one that they can bring for outreach.
Yeah, it's much more noticeable than a brochure on a counter, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Um, I guess for me, there was two things. One, I was actually talking to Bill about it. Um, I wanna know if there's a way to kind of like promote or collaborate with the S F O Museum? Cause, um, I got to see the Alvarado project out there. It was in Terminal Three, and I got connected because of Bill introduced me to Nicole, who's the curator. And then, um, you know, I didn't really know until going through that process, like, oh, like, um, you can actually go to the S F O Museum for free if, you know, you could get validated parking, and you just got to have to go through, ask them to sign like the, the tickets, it's for free, and then you're able to access, uh, pre-security the, the museum and also the exhibits. And then if you wanna access the museum areas, the exhibits that are after security, you just have to get a specific badge for like within a certain time window and accessing it. So, you know, for me, it was like, I wish I knew that earlier, and I hope like there's a way to promote that for like the con- the Daly City constituents of the library to know like this is, uh, something accessible if, if and when you choose to go.
I'm wondering if, so they, they do sometimes put things that are free and discover and go, but I don't know what would be involved with this one as a way to promote it. We can also, of course, you know, hang flyers and such, but as we just discussed, we have a lot of flyers. Interesting. Uh, yeah, I ha- I haven't been.
Maybe just like quick, quickly, like on the website or? Is it always free, though? What if we like put it and then like one day it's not free anymore?
I don't know what you mean. So, um, so if you, so if you drive, uh, and you park in the parking garage, you just have to take your ticket and then ask them to validate it, like at the actual S F O Museum, like the, the brick and mortar part. Not where like the exhibit is, but, um, like where the, uh, the staffs are. The, um, my card was signed, and then I just brought it to, um, where it's like the checkout part. Just bring it to an actual staff person to like see, cause like since it's signed, like to show them like, hey, and let them know like, hey, I went to that S F O Museum. This is my validated ticket. I was told it was for free. I do so, and then, you know, just hand it to them, and then they let you go through or like let you le- leave after like visiting.
It's so amazing.
Yeah, basically, the, uh, S F O Museum will provide access to all of the exhibits in the airport. They will also provide guided tours of the exhibits, uh, with prior coordination. Or provide, as Jador said, what's called an M badge for museum, uh, that requires some prior coordination as well. But an M badge gives a person the ability to access anything both pre and post-security. Well, pre-security's, you know, anybody can do that, but you don't have to have a, a valid ticket to go through the TSA checkpoint. The procedure's the same, just as if you were a traveler. But, um, you know, it's a great program. There's no charge, as you said. If you use the M badge program and you park in a, uh, a garage and you pull your ticket and take it with you to the pickup point for the M badge, uh, they will validate it, uh, when you turn your badge back in. And so you basically get to walk around the airport all day, all three big terminals and the international terminal, you know, uh, to your heart's content.
Nice.
And then the second item, I was talking to a friend about it, and then I was trying to see on YouTube, like, if other libraries have done it. I wanna know, like, is there a way to do kind of like a farmer's market type of thing? Like, in one of our libraries, like, for example, like the ceremony library, it's that's shared with Park and Rec, that parking lot area, just as a means and ways to kind of like raise funds towards, um, if it's shared with library and park?
Oh, so, um, I believe Recreation Services does have some, some, um, they, they do a lot of program, food programs for people. And I do believe they have, they have like the pantry, which is free food, but that's o- over at the Dolger, um, Center. To do a farmer's market, I think you go through the orga- the farmer's market organization. And the, the, they, the only place that I've ever seen it in Daly City was in, um, at the mall, yeah. So I don't know, cause it, there's not, it's not really a suitable space, I think, in the parking lot there. It's the only thing. I think we'd have to reach out to the, to the farmer's market themselves, right, and see if they wanted to do it like a, a special one. But I know also a lot of the, um, people who sell at a farmer's market, they're, you know, they come from far away from their farms. And so I think that they hit, they have a schedule where they go to the different cities, right?
I was gonna also say, you know, also like food trucks, if that's also a possibility as well.
Currently, the only, um, food truck, it's food, I suppose, uh, the ice cream ban seems to really stalk Geller Park. Yes, and there's another one, too. I think that they, I, you know, I, I, I've never operated a food truck, so I don't know, but I assume that they need, um, permits to do that, right?
I know, what is it like? Yeah, specific permits. I know like for sure, it's like the county that you're planning to do business. And like a s- maybe a specific cell permit for like each city maybe, but I know for sure the county is operating in.
For food safety, yeah.
Yeah, probably some type of like M O U, maybe.
Maybe. So, um, I think Recreation Services is probably the one that does the, um, the organizing. But, uh, they do, well, like, for instance, when we have Casa Yahan.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's going to be in Geller Park this coming year, and so there will be food trucks a- associated with that, that come in with that. But are you just thinking?
I meant like more like if it was a monthly thing, bi-weekly.
At the mall?
Yeah, it, it was Tuesday, uh, but I, yeah.
So you're thinking specifically at Geller Park?
Yeah, we're just like within our libraries, or like even if it's like Bay Shore, cause I remember when I, I'm trying to remember the name of the event, but like, I liked how it was set up, like in that's, in that parking lot, like along the hill, plus by like the back grass area. Like where they just can raise, like where there's like tents, there was like some food trucks that were just set up. Yeah.
Oh, that's coming up? Yeah, they're gonna do the block party again. I don't, I'm not part of the planning, so I'm not sure if they have food trucks. But, um, I think usually, uh, uh, there's a cost associated with bringing them out, cause, you know, they have to make money.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we have, it's not so, I know we did look into Mr. Softy, and it was cost prohibitive, cause we wanted to bring them out for, for our end of summer thing, so.
Cause I know s- like, those type of small businesses, it's either, like, from what I remember, it's usually either they get paid a flat rate or they have to earn a, a specific rate, or it's like a percentage in terms of like what's given.
Yeah. Hmm, that's an interesting, interesting idea to think about that. Yeah, it's usually, it's a, it's a financial consideration.
Yeah. Or is, just wanted to ask. Thank you, Chayla. Anyone else? If there is nothing else, I would like to move for adjournment?
Uh, before we adjourn, did you wanna talk about the next meeting?
Oh, yes. So I do have some agenda building items that we've discussed. Un- unfortunately, in June, I will, um, be out of town on the date of our meeting. Um, so I think, what day is our meeting? That's a good question. Our meeting is the seventeenth. Nice, yes. So, yes, I will not be here. So I, I, I think, I, I was looking into rescheduling, but I know this room is, is used by a lot of other boards and commissions, so. Maybe skipping and, and then meeting again in July.
Yeah. Meeting again in July.
Is July the reorg for us?
Yes.
Don't be sure.
Good memory. Let's, let's put that on there. All right. And if that works for everybody, I'll, I'll, I'll go through the process of doing an official cancellation notice and all that, but you'll, you'll know to expect it. No surprise.
Was there anything else?
Uh, no.
I will like briefly report, um, my volunteer activity with Westlake Library. So as you know, the banks, um, I did it with Wells Fargo, and now I'm working for Bank of America, but they have the Community Reinvestment Act, um, which includes like free sites, uh, for financial literacy. And so our topic was fraud, because as we discussed, it's like very rampant. And, um, we had some participation, but that's okay. But it was good engagement. They were very engaged. They were very engaged. They asked questions. They shared, um, personal stories. So I do encourage anybody to, um, you know, volunteer at the local library. If, um, your line of work has something, um, that would align with, um, the library's needs, then definitely talk to Sheila, cause it is a really good experience. It's personally fulfilling. Um, it's good for, to take teammates for development. Actually, uh, the gentleman that I work with, um, public speaking is one of his, um, you know, development opportunities that he wants to work on, so it was great for him as well, so.
Gentle introduction.
Yes.
If there is nothing else, I would like to move for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The meeting has ended at six fifty-one P M. Thank you, everyone.